Governor of Gunning, let's call the Finance Committee of November, November, November 15th to order. And if you all can stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And public notification of this meeting has been published, posted, and distributed in compliance with the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act. And I would look for someone to make the motion to approve today's agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Howard. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. I saw Mr. Dawson who came in, and we are doing a meeting that is in person as well as virtual. So I've got Ms. Howard and myself here. One else is online, and we do have a quorum for today. So the agenda has been motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion? If not, we will pass the motion without objection, or the agenda without objection. Is there any objection to the current agenda? Seeing no objection, we move on to approval of the minutes from August 16th. I know we have a couple other minutes that's going to come after this, so this is back in August 16th. Do I have someone else? Thank you, Mr. Dawson. Is there a second?
I will second that.
All right. Is there any objection to approving the minutes of August 16th? Seeing no objection, let's move on then. And Mr. Hayes Williams, if you could please give us our update for the, where we are right now with our finances.
Do you want to do some comment?
Oh, I'm sorry. So hang on for a second. We do, I did miss Mrs.'s comment. Is there anyone that's here with the public that would like to speak? Three minutes?
No, sir. There isn't.
No one in house, no one online. So, Mr. Hayes, then the floor is yours.
I'm gonna try not to shock myself this time. Okay. Thank you, Chairman. As you know, we've been looking, we've been staffing up in the Finance Department, and I wanted to, and I wanted to introduce some of our new hires. We have Brian Cronin, who's new. He is our Senior Accountant. He came to us from the Hilton Head Public Service District as a Senior Accountant. He was in the district for 16 years. Prior to that, he worked as a Budget Analyst for a business valuation company in New Jersey. We're happy to have him here. We also have Ms. Rosia Bennett. She's a Finance AP Clerk. She has over 20 years of banking and finance experience working at Wiltshire National Bank. While banking, she's working, and she's also responsible for educating other employees and customers about banking and finance. Our other hire is Vincent Jones. He is also an AP Clerk. Vincent's currently working to get his BA in accounting. He should have, he should have enough credits to take the CPA exam and will graduate in accounting the degree the following year. So God bless him. That was the exam that I took and have the scores to prove it. Anyway, currently, we're pulling items for the 2021 audit. The auditor should be on site here tomorrow. We're optimistically hoping to finish by December 31st, but we hopefully will not be any later than that, but there is a possibility that we may. So we're work, we've been working very diligently in getting everything pulled and ready for them. Another thing on our, in front of us is Gadsby 87, which is Accounting for Leases. It's a new standard that is coming into effect in 2022. It's a fairly large undertaking. We're going to have to be looking at all the leases that we have, both operating and capital and making disclosures. The good thing is, is the debt book software that we have helps us with that determination, and it'll be a matter of getting it together for them. We're having a meeting with them, several people in Finance and Procurement tomorrow to get that underway. One other thing, we've received a lot of, some phone calls about the 1% sales tax that's going to be over at the end of December. And I've talked to the South Carolina Department of Revenue there in the process of sending, sending it out to all of the taxpayers within the county. And we're going to work and try and put some communications out there to help inform them, other taxpayers, but it will go through the 31st as a part of state statute. So.
Good. Any questions for Mr. Williams? Anyone online? I think that you are free to go. Thank you, Mr. Williams. Actually, I think we got you back up here again, don't we?
Financial statements.
President, financial statements.
Yep, we got you coming back up here for the discussion and presentation of your date financial statements.
Okay. Your, the financial statements were sent out in your package, in your agenda package, and I'll be referring to the item number and the page number that it's located on. For the financial statements for revenues, it's located, it's item eight, page seven. Nothing really unexpected there. Well, one thing that was kind of unexpected, but out of the alarm taxes are kind of where they're supposed to be. Obviously, as Beaufort County taxpayers, y'all probably just got yours in the mail. We're expecting to see those collections go up in November, December, and January, obviously, as they become due. You'll see our intergovernmental revenues are still down. I contacted the South Carolina Department of Revenue, and they're reallocating state aid to subdivisions based on the census, and they actually have not mailed out our first quarter yet. So it's not a mail out, it's an EFT. We haven't gotten that one yet. And then the third thing on there that this will look kind of wonky is the miscellaneous revenue of $770,000. This resulted from a sale of the DSN property, it was a one-time sale of approximately $730,000, $37,000. So that takes me to the next page, which is overall expenditures. And everything's pretty well tracking where it should be. Not bad. The public works, they're a little bit above their 33%. And that's because the payments of Beaufort Memorial and Beaufort Jaffers Cop Health for Indigent Care, which is quarterly, and typically we pay right when the quarter starts, so that they get their money upfront so they can do with it as they need to. Public welfare, it's below 33%, and that's because we have the Together for Beaufort, which is a grant that we do, of about $398,000, and that hasn't gone out yet. Those checks were actually mailed out last Friday, so all the grant recipients of the Together for Beaufort should be getting that within the next week or two, depending on postage, post office. Anyways, and that kind of wraps it up for the general fund. I didn't know if y'all had any questions on the general fund before I proceeded over to the enterprise funds. The details of the revenues and expenditures go from pages nine through 12 of the agenda.
Any questions for Mr. Williams?
And I'll go to the enterprise funds, and as you know, we have four enterprise funds. I'll start with Hilton Head Island Airport. They're actually doing really well this, so far this year. They're about $96,000 as an operating budget. They're about 50, which is about 54% of where they should be as opposed to 33. They're actually doing real well there. They have some capital grants in there that may, that kind of inflate the expenditures a little bit, but they're going to be 90% covered by the FAA, another 5% by SEAC, and then we'll have to put in 5%. That takes to the Beaufort Executive Airport. They're not doing as well financially. They're looking at about $110,000 loss for the, for the year. They have some items that have been booked that will rectify hopefully by the end of the year, and that's what we're looking to. They also have an inflated number for, for capital projects, but those are also covered 90% by the FAA and the SEAC.
Hayes, if I could, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. Yep. Brian, go ahead.
What items are booked that have not been brought in yet?
Well, the gas, typically the avgas fuel that is purchased, and then we'll be selling that, and the revenues will come in after, after we purchase the gas. We're basically on the cash basis throughout the year as far as, you know, when we pay them and when it goes out. So as the sales come, it will, you will see that the cost of sales for the, which is basically the avgas, are almost as much as sales are, and we, we expect this to change between the next couple of months. It should rectify.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Ace.
Are you there? Are you talking about the Beaufort Executive Airport?
Right.
Generally speaking, their revenue is coming from the sale of fuel and rental, right?
Yes, sir. And hangar rental, yes, sir.
And are they projected to lose money, is what you're saying, or?
No, they're, they're.
Lose money, or they?
Their budget's not projected to lose money.
Okay.
They're budgeted to break even.
Right.
And that's, you know, their, their timing differences and when you pay expenses versus, you know, when you get the income, and we're hoping to see that that reverses out.
That's what I.
That's where we're going. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Appreciate that.
We have, we have a new enterprise fund this year. It's a solid waste and recycling. You'll look, our revenues are down right now, but those are part of your property tax bills. You know, that's an actual mill that we did, so we expect that to increase over November, December, January timeframe. One thing that kind of pops out there is you'll look at the, the purchase services is at 96%, but these amounts are spent slash encumbered. So there's an encumbrance of about 4.5.4 million out of the total 6.9 million. So that's money that we booked, but it hasn't actually been paid out yet. It'll go over the rest of the year. So we're not at 96%. We still have plenty of time there, and we'll see with the out of alarm taxes coming in. And then as far as the storm or utility goes, revenues and expenses were as expected. They're both within expectations. The revenues are a little low due to the same reason as the solid waste and recycling. They should correct in the next several months. And, you know, the expenses are a little under where they should be, so we're good with that. So if y'all don't have any other questions, that's really all I have for y'all today.
Any questions? Seeing none, Mr. Williams, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right, and then let's move on and Mr. Farmer, I'd like to have you address us, please, and accommodations tax. This is a state 2% tax, which is the board recommendations to tourism-related organizations in the amount of $800,000. And we always appreciate you coming and all your hard work of what you do, so thank you.
Well, thank you for that. My committee is, is pretty hardworking. It was nice to have enough money to give away to make a difference. Do you, do you all have a copy of it? It is what you see. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any, any questions? Sarah, can you pull it up for, okay, Sarah's pulling it up. While she's pulling it up, is there any questions for anybody that's had a chance to go through and see, like, we received that on Friday, so obviously we've had a couple days to look at it. I know everyone comes very well prepared and looks at it before they get here. But Ms. Howard, do you want to go ahead and?
Just an acronym, NIBCAA?
Native Island Business Council. I'm missing a word. NIBCA, we just, it goes by that.
Maybe when it goes to full council, we could have.
It's for the gullup.
Okay.
Celebration.
Okay. Maybe if we could just have that on our, when it goes to full council. And it will go for three readings, correct, Chairman?
Yes, we would, we'll make the recommendation to send this to council if that's what the committee chooses, and then there'll be three readings after that, which then that probably puts us into January or something with only one meeting in December coming up, the final approvals. Yes, Mr. Robinson?
I may not be remembering this right, but I know our local 3% comes through in ordinance, but somehow it sticks in my mind that we did one and done on this, but I could be wrong about that in the past.
I don't understand.
In terms of council approval. I was kind of remembering, we may have only had one that's required.
And I can easily be.
I don't, once it leaves here.
I know.
And I think Mr. Williams is our.
It's about time we met.
I know. On this visit, I've never met you before. It's going to need three readings, and obviously they're going to be, this is the State Accommodations Tax Board, which is nominated by county council, and then, and then you have the local and accommodations and hospitality tax, which will be nominated by the county administration.
Yeah, I was just going from memory, and I, and that may be efficient.
Hey, real quick, give us the background on all the three different, just so, educate people, just to kind of.
ATAC. So we have the State Accommodation Tax, which, which we get through the state. We get it remitted in four quarterly payments. The South Carolina Department of Revenue, they send it to us. It's not something that we collect, and I think it's 3%. And then we have a local accommodations and local hospitality. I'd have to look at my notes and see which one's two and which one's three. These are levied in unincorporated parts of Beaufort County and are, they're collected by the Business Services Division headed by Edra Stevens, and we get those monthly. So, but, but his committee is totally separate from the other two, and his committee, thankfully chairs the committee and goes through all the selection process, and Shannon Milroy helps him out and gets everything together for the awards, but they do a great job, so.
She did a great job for her first time.
Well, I know you put her through the wringer, so anyways, any other question?
Well, if, Mr., if we have.
Yeah, I do.
Go ahead, Brian.
Thank you. Hayes, if you would, please, let's go through the, the amounts that we received for the last couple of years versus what we've sent out and that we, that we assigned to various organizations for tourism.
Councilman, I would ask to table that.
Why is it so dramatically different?
What, for this year versus last year?
Right.
Well, the, the reason was, we had the fourth quarter for the State Accommodations Tax was significantly larger than what we thought it would be to the tune of, I think, $200,000, and this is off the top of my head. And we had a, so we had a surplus coming in for this year, and then we were projecting, you know, typically we award about $500,000, so we added the surplus plus the $500,000 this year. They come up with the number that we're awarding this year.
Yeah, last year we only did $375,000, something like that.
500,000.
It was 530,000.
534.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm looking at the received last year column, and obviously there are different organizations receiving money, so the total won't match up. All right, well, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Mr. Hervishon, I think I saw your hand up. Go ahead.
Thank you. I've got a couple questions. I'll start with, can we just get an overview just, just for the public's sake, as far as how the committee went about deciding what organizations would get, would get which amounts and how that process just kind of fleshed out?
It starts off with the county sending out a notice for applications. They go to 501(c)(3)'s that basically are involved in heads and beds. Those applications, the county publishes a schedule for all of this to happen. The applications come in, they're distributed to my board. Each member is assigned a certain number to be quote expert in. We read, every member reads all the applications and notes questions, but each member has five or six that they dig deeper on so they can be the expert. We, we then have a interview schedule. All applicants come before the board in here. We give them about 10 minutes, and it's mainly for us to ask questions because we now know what they're asking for and why and how. At the end of that, then our board goes into what you might call executive session, and we sore thumb the amounts out. What I mean by sore thumb, we argue back and forth about who gets what, and that's how we come to our conclusions. And then that's turned into the county.
Appreciate that. Two more questions. The one item that kind of jumps off the page is the concourse de elegance, which has been hotly debated over the last couple of years, and we haven't funded over the last couple of years. So I'm just wondering what the rationale was to include that this year.
Because they're a generator of tourist dollars, huge generator of tourist dollars. And having missed a year, we thought it was even more important this year to make sure the advertising got out there. And it must have worked. They had huge, huge pre-event sales this year. Cold out there for the event, though.
Do you have a sense of how much dollar-wise they generate in tourism dollars?
I didn't hear the beginning.
How much do they generate in tourism dollars, out of curiosity?
I, I don't have that with me. It's in their application. It's, it's, it's a lot.
And my last question, I see pickleball on here for Burton Wells, and then there's been some question recently about the Beaufort Tennis Facility. Just kind of jogged my, jogged my memory about that one. The Beaufort Tennis Facility, was that funded last year? And is that fully funded?
Not through us.
Not through you? Okay. Was that, were those county funds, Hayes?
That was through the local and, and the local accommodations and hospitality tax, and I think it was $350,000, but that they, to redo the boundary street tennis courts is going to cost significantly more than that, so I think that they're coming back this year to the local and accommodations and hospitality to bridge the gap between the two. So hopefully.
Hayes, this is, this is Chuck. I can address. So we are fully funded. We're using the Bob Jones proceeds, and we have a part grant, and when we couple that with the HNA tax grant, we're fully funded on the downtown tennis courts.
Awesome. Thank you.
If I could just take a minute, you identified the single most debated request in our list this year, and that is because, obviously, it was for over $600,000, and it's a delayed spend. But what got us is the current popularity of the sport and the potential for big tournaments. So we essentially gave them seed money, and we hope they find the rest of their money elsewhere.
Now, now I've got another question. I'm glad you provided that context. Just out of curiosity, when we say big tournaments, what does, what does that mean and what does that look like? Just out of your curiosity.
Based on the number of court, I'm not a pickleball player, so I can't tell you the rules, but just seeing on TV the amount of tournaments that are going all over the country, we just felt that it could, and being where these are, it would have to be tourists playing. So we knew there'd be heads and beds if they can get these facilities built and then start running tournaments. I don't know that I answered your question. I shied away from giving you a number because I don't know one off the top of my head.
No, I appreciate that. I put you on the spot. I was just curious, I was just curious what that looks like. It was, there was no other basis for the question other than curiosity, so I appreciate that.
The other protection we have on that is our two-year spending window. So if they don't get their money, we'll get it back two years hence.
Dick, this is Councilman Dawson.
Yes, Mr. Dawson, go ahead.
All right. Penn Center request, they requested $60,000. Last year, they got 24.8, and this year they were reduced, I just lost it. Where'd he go? This year, it's moving around on me. Okay. This year, it was reduced by about $5,000. Can you speak to that?
Yeah, I can tell you what it was for. We wanted to, when we look at these applications, we get down into the details, and consequently, in some of the applications where they're not detailed. And consequently, in some of the applications where they're not detailed enough, we tend not to give them money because we can't allocate it. In the Penn, in the Penn situation, we actually wanted to fund their video production, equipment rental for video and print ads for their, their, um, their holidays, and I can't remember the name of the holidays. It's Heritage Festival Operations and Marketing is what they asked for, and we picked those items out of there to fund.
Mr. Dawson, go ahead, I missed Mr. Glover, go ahead, I'm sorry, Mr. Glover.
I'm not going to say what I started to say, but yeah, thank you, um, Mr. Farmer, Farmer, appreciate the presentation, um, I'm going to assume that, um, the, some of the groups that are here are first-time funders requests? Or do you have a note that you can put in a future package to say, this is a first-time funder? Um, there's some that are repeated, um, I do know that, that wasn't funded last year, but, you know, they've been, received previous funding by, um, by the organization. Um, but how many new, then, I mean, how many new participants would you say is in this list here? Because the amount of money is going up to 300,000, by 300,000, so how many, how many new people? And you don't have to tell me that now, you can tell me that later.
About five are new, we, we know most of our applicants, we, I've been on this board a long time and I see the groups every year. And generally they're asking for the same thing, and it's right because they're attracting visitors every year. But we get the new ones, like the Hilton Head Land Trust is new, Hilton Head Airport was new.
But they didn't get anything, you didn't fund them.
We didn't think that was appropriate for us to fund, the, the airport.
Right, right, um, but I'm, I was actually referencing, um, uh, funders, uh, how many, how many new groups you funded this year?
Well, the, if I, if memory serves, and I'm getting up there in years, so it may not.
I'm, me too, I'll say it here.
The Beaufort Area Sports Council is either on their first or second year, and we funded them completely, um, let's see who else is new.
I was just, just curious, that's all, I mean, you don't have to do that now, if you could.
That parks and recreation, that we're talking about pickleball courts, that's new.
But they got funded before, right, parking, right?
No, not from us, we've never seen them before.
Oh, okay, okay, um, so, so the, the remaining group, um, you spread out the remaining 300,000, um, to the, all these groups. So some group got more money.
Yeah.
This year than they did last year because the money's available.
The money's available, the state of the project or the type of the project, the, the quality of the application and budgets, we, we look at it all.
Okay, um, and, and do you at some point in time, I know when you do, you know, promotion, that's one thing, you want to promote, you want to promote, so that's justify the tourist, uh, funding for that. Um, there, there are some other funding here that are not, uh, promoting, but, um, um, they're projects in specific.
Give me an example of what you mean.
Well, if, if I'm with the Chamber of Commerce, I'm promoting.
Right.
So you're funding me to do just that.
Right.
And then there's some, some here that are for facility, roofing.
Well, I'll give you a good example, Hayward House.
Yeah, that's exactly what I see.
Which is the Bluffton, what am I trying to say?
Yeah.
You know what I'm trying to say, we have, we have been funding them operationally for years and years and years, uh, and the law allows that because they are.
Okay.
A tourist.
Generating.
No, they, they facilitate, that's what I, facilitate tourists into Bluffton. So, and, and also Bluffton's one of the very few in, Hayward House is one of the very few recipients in Bluffton, and they're generating dollars. So we always try to think of fairness across all the areas.
So, so, okay, um, so, so if you're generating, uh, you don't necessarily have to do, deal with brochures and et cetera, et cetera. You can actually do some improvement on your facilities as well as what I see you.
If that facility is used by tourists and exists because of tourists, yes.
Okay, appreciate that.
Sure.
Thank you.
Mr. Robman?
Yeah, thank you, Dick, for all you do, you've been doing this ever since I got here, I think.
It's been about 12, 13 years.
Okay, hey, uh, just on the Hilton Head Airport, um, something that you might look at it differently next year if they reapply, and, and here's my thought process. I, I've always believed that the approaching 3 million tourists that come here are the primary generator of tourists that then go to the, the balance of the county. And therefore, by promoting people coming to Hilton Head, I think we indirectly create a tremendous amount of, uh, tourism dollars in the northern part of the, of the county. It was also interesting, we were looking at the airport for other reasons, um, that at least on the H tax and the 3%, so I assume it may be true on the 2%. Uh, there was actually, a majority of that is actually generated in the unincorporated but southern part of the, the county, which I had always assumed it was the other way around. But I actually do think that the Hilton Head Airport is a, is a logical, uh, because all they're doing is promoting people to come and to have more. And then the town, as I understand, is going to put about 160,000 in, and we tend to partner with that, I don't want you to do anything differently, but it's just, you might look at it that way next time.
Will do.
Any other questions for Mr. Farmer? And, um, what I'd like to do is, I think we did this earlier in the year, if there is any questions, if they could send the questions to me and copy Sarah, we will then make sure that those questions get answered and, and then everyone in council will get a response back if there's anything else additional. And this is why we have this committee, is, is we want people out there that are impartial, that are objective, can make decisions for us, so we're not put into, uh, positions of, of, of making, uh, decisions that are partial, uh, whenever, when it comes to giving out money. So again, we appreciate all you do, we know you do a, a very fair job, and it always has been, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
So today, we're looking at, um, recommending this to go to council, um, for three readings, and I'm not sure, Mr. Farmer, if you'd be willing to come back at least one of those meetings for us if we had more questions. But again, we'll, we'll let you know if there's any other questions that come up with that.
If I need to, certainly I will.
Absolutely, no, thank you, so thank you again, Mr. Farmer.
Thank you.
Move approval, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Robman, do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Glover.
Yes, yes.
All right, so we have a, a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, we will, um, approve this by, without objection, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, we'll move this then on to council. All right, and so let's move on here, and, um, number 10 on our agenda, um, request from the Fourth Circuit Public Defender's Office for additional funding, uh, in the amount of, um, $166,397. And I think that we do have someone from the Public Defender's Office, oh, she's online, okay.
Yes.
Great. Yes, Ms. Smart Giddings, go ahead, uh, the floor is yours, thank you for coming out today.
Good afternoon, thank you for having me again, I just wanted to make sure that council received, yes, you did. So I want to start with, um, what we're requesting, um, I think sometime before I became circuit defender, circuit defenderhood opted out of the county's policies where they would receive, uh, the raises that the county does. And I'm not sure if he did that because we received funds from four additional sources or for what. So our staff has not been able to receive any of the raises that the Beaufort County, the regular, the other Beaufort County staff members receive. So one of the things that I wanted to, in order to be competitive, is to give the staff members that I have raises. I have lost probably in the last 18 months about five attorneys because they're leaving to go into private practice. They're going to, um, one of my lawyers left to go to Columbia, another lawyer left to go back to York or Union County, and several, I think, have left to go into private practice. So I'm finding it difficult to hire new attorneys at the salary range. I tried very hard to, um, hire attorneys right out of law school so that I could pay them about $55,000. And I think we've had that position posted for about a year, and within that time, we've had maybe three applicants. So it's, I'm definitely having to increase the salary range just to hire attorneys. But I also want the staff to know, the staff members that are still here, that I appreciate them, and I want to keep them here. And so I want to give them the cost of living raise, and also any other raises that the Beaufort County employees might receive. It's been difficult, um, I almost lost my admin in Beaufort, Kristy Compton, who was amazing, to, um, the new, uh, new law firm, Morgan and Morgan, because I think they wanted to offer her an amount of money that I can't possibly pay her. But I do want to increase her salary to let her know that I appreciate her being here, and the attorneys that have stayed throughout the transition and who are staying because they're true believers, I want to let them know, know that I appreciate them. So we're asking for the cost of living increases and also an increase just to be able to recruit attorneys to fill the positions that I have available. So we've given you a breakdown of what that is going to cost, and I also included, um, just so you'll know what we did with the money that you gave us last year, I can't remember whether, I think it was last year, um, just to update you so that you will know we're being good stewards of the Beaufort County taxpayer money. We did a graph so that you could see the number of clients that we have, and also the number of cases that my attorneys handle, and the transition and the upward tick that we're seeing. As I told you last year, I do not know whether or not that upward tick is a result of COVID, I definitely believe that COVID has contributed to it, but we're seeing an increase. And it could be because you gave me money for the bond court, we've seen an increase in cases that we're receiving, which is extremely helpful for my office because we're receiving cases through bond court. It's amazing, we're not having to wait 30 days after someone's been out of jail, we're able to request preliminary hearings within the 10 days because we're getting appointed in bond court. So the money that you gave me from bond court has been very, very instrumental. We have a, a staff that specifically, um, that all they do is the bond court for me. And my one magistrate court attorney, um, was being overwhelmed with the number of cases that he had, so I had to hire another magistrate court attorney. But what that has done, uh, we were rotating because that one attorney was rotating between Bluffton and Beaufort. So Bluffton Municipal Court couldn't, I'm sorry, Bluffton Magistrate couldn't have court for a month because they were allowing him to have court in Beaufort for a month. So now there is an attorney assigned to Bluffton Magistrate, and there's an attorney assigned to Beaufort Magistrate, so that's helping their case log as well. My Senate mitigation team, um, as I told you, uh, last year Judge Mullin greatly appreciates that mitigation team. My Senate specialist has been very, very instrumental in getting placement, um, for our clients, drug treatment, our clients actually have been bonded out of jail and transported to treatment facilities. So that's, um, helping in decline in the number of cases that are remaining in jail. So we've implemented that Senate mitigation specialist who's, who, if they haven't been able to bond out, and our candidate for drug tra- drug treatment or mental health placement, she's actively working to find placement so that they can get out of jail. So we're doing everything that we can to reduce the number of people that we have in our jails, that saves you money, and it helps us as well. So, um, now you see the graph of the cases that, um, my magistrate court attorneys have disposed of, and as you can see, we have an increase from March until September, um, there were 99. And in September, he disposed, between the two of them, you can see the increase to 213, so you can see where adding another attorney actually helped with disposing cases in Beaufort County. So we have, have tried very hard to help you save money through, um, the number of cases, the number of people in the jails. And I'm asking that you consider, um, giving me funding to increase the salaries for the employee, employees that we already have, and to be able to be competitive with, um, the Charleston Public Defender's Office, the Orangeburg Public Defender's Office, all of our local Public Defender's Office. I was able to hire a senior attorney from the Berkeley County Office, but I had to pay her a lot of money to get her to lead the Berkeley County Office, and she had been there since, um, I think she started in the 90s. She left for six years and then she went back, so she's a very seasoned attorney, she's going to be able to help out tremendously. Uh, Judge Mullin asked that I not hire another baby attorney, so I'm trying drastically to recruit senior attorneys so that we can move the tremendous amount of cases that we have in Beaufort County. Unfortunately, like I told you last year, the uptick is in our, our murders and our rapes and our more serious drug cases, and it's difficult when I hire a baby lawyer to be able to be prepared to try those cases. And Beaufort County is running two courtrooms, I believe last week, we had two courtrooms with two trial judges. So at the same time, my most senior attorney wasn't able to help my, uh, junior attorney, so I had to ask one of my Jasper County attorneys to come and sit with my Beaufort County attorney because there's not another senior attorney in my Beaufort County Office. So, um, hopefully when Ms. Tully comes, I believe in about a week, I won't have to ask, pull another staff from another county to help my Beaufort County, Beaufort County attorneys, but I appreciate, I think, last month I had to pull someone from Colliton, I believe, to help out in Beaufort. So we're trying to be as efficient as we can with what we have, but I just feel the, the need to increase my staff's salary and to, to be more competitive with our salaries, to be able to recruit more competent lawyers. Yes, sir.
Are you talking to me, Ms. Smart Giddings?
Yes, sir.
Can I just call you Stephanie, it's so very, very, thank you very much, Stephanie, I appreciate it. And not only that, I appreciate all you do to make sure that justice is served in our courts and, and that everybody gets a fair trial. I really appreciate it, I want you to know, I'm inclined to sponsor this motion and vote, and certainly sponsor this as a motion, but, um, my only concern is, I understand that the uptick might not have been able to be anticipated, but we're already in this year's budget. And my concern is for staff, how do we fund this? Will the money be there, should we, should we need to write this check? Can staff address that issue for me, please?
And can I, can I just interject something that, that we're doing as circuit defenders? A lot of other circuit defenders have asked their county council to use some of their COVID money in a three-year grant, so it wouldn't be a reoccurring offense? Because I know once you allocate, um, funds to our budget, it's reoccurring, but we'd be, um, we wouldn't be opposed to, to, if you were to be able to give us this money for three years. And then hopefully, in the next three years, um, Beaufort County will have even more money that they will be able to fund these positions fully. But I would not be opposed to a three-year grant type, um, allocation.
Appreciate that, thank you, that's a good possibility for us. Eric, do we have the, the cash, do we have the money?
Uh, I mean, we can possibly find the money, I'm hesitant to recommend that you all take action on this today until I can bring in the HR team and have them look at this, uh, to see if what, uh, Stephanie is proposing is in line with the other public defender's offices in the area. I'm not disputing what she says, but we, we need to have some time to check this out and vet it through our HR department to make sure we're not creating salary compression, um, across the board.
And we're not like sucking it out of.
Yeah.
Peter to play PayPal, I get, I absolutely get it.
I need to explore this raise issue a little bit, I mean, I don't, you know, uh, I'm not real clear on how that works. It seems to me that public defenders ought to be, uh, have a mechanism in order to get a raise, uh, so I need to look into that a little bit as well, so I don't think there's any urgency on that.
So I don't think there's any urgency on this. So if you all would just, uh, give me, uh, the next three or four weeks to take a look at this um, and come back at the next finance committee meeting, we'll have a more thorough recommendation for you.
Let me just say that, that this was thrown in at the last minute. It was, um, undermined discretion and so staff has not had a chance to look at this. Um, that was something that, um, the Smartgiddings had asked to, to present. So today we're looking more at presenting this, getting information. Um, you know, obviously we had the, um, Solicitor's Office also come recently with a similar request. Um, so, and again, finding the money is the biggest thing. Um, as I keep quoting Mr. Hervishon is, um, you know, where, where's the money coming from? Which obviously, uh, I learned that from him. So, um, at, at, at this point, um, is there any other questions that we have while we're here? So, um, Councilman Hervishon, go ahead.
I think.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thanks for the attribution. Um, the question is where, where are you with the other counties? Have they already agreed to additional funding or is that process just starting? Where, where is that? I'm just kind of curious as to where we fall.
I wish that my other counties would contribute as well as Beaufort County. Um, I have not been able to get any money, of course, from Allendale County. I don't even, I wish I could just take them out of the circuit, but I can't. Um, Jasper County is considering it, Colliton County has not, um, because they gave us the brand new, well, a new office space, I believe, two years ago. So they believe that, that accounts for any additional funding that I might receive in the next couple of years. Um, but unfortunately for my staff in Allendale Hampton, Jasper, Colliton and Beaufort, they all understand that they can't get a raise. Um, when I asked for a raise and, and we also provided you with a form, this is only for my Beaufort County employees. I, I can't in good conscience use Beaufort County money for Allendale County. And I tell Allendale County and Hampton County as well, because I've been having really difficulty in receiving funds from them that I provide them with good quality staff and, and they don't provide me with enough money. And had it not been for the state, I don't know what I would do in those offices. But when, unfortunately, when, you know, my Allendale attorney finds out that Beaufort County has gotten raised, my response is talk to your county council members because they won't listen to me. So I, I, if you give me, whenever Beaufort County gives me money for Beaufort County, that money stays within Beaufort County.
Good, any other questions?
No, I, I just, I just want to make it clear that I'm, I'm in support of moving this forward at, at a pace as quickly as staff can get back to us with some kind of reconciliation and a recommendation for a source of funding. I, I, I want to see this move forward. I think that our citizens deserve, um, proper, uh, representation in court and I want to make sure that happens.
And I'm, and I'm fine with you all advancing it today. Uh, we just probably would not be ready to discuss this at the very next council meeting.
Yeah, I, I don't think that's appropriate. I want the committee to have a chance to, to go over all the maths, sir, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Glover was next, then Mr. Robin.
Um, just, I want to just piggyback on what Brian said. Uh, I, I personally would like to see this advance further. Um, but, um, I'm, I, I can be patient, but I, um, I'm not going to be too patient. So just leave it right there, thank you.
Mr. Robin?
Uh, two, two things. Uh, I, I do think we need to move this along in a timely manner. And I frankly wouldn't see anything wrong with moving this forward, um, particularly since we only have one meeting in December, knowing that in between the first and second reading, it could certainly come back to committee for a more, um, detailed discussion. Um, the, the second point I would make is I think as, as it's being analyzed, um, we, we probably need to be taking a look at what the backlog is and how many people are required in order to dispose of it in a timely manner. Because if you can't dispose of cases in a timely manner, then justice isn't served. Um, and we, we know, I remember from Duffy's presentation, there was a fairly sizable increase in the, uh, the number, in the backlog. And obviously if you don't have enough people, that, that hole just gets deeper and it gets even more deep if you, uh, are losing people who are familiar with a case and then a new person has to start over again. Um, so if, if Brian wanted to make a, uh, a motion to move this forward, I would be happy to second it, knowing that it would come back between first and second reading.
Thank you, thank you very much. I, I wasn't aware this was going to require, uh, three readings in a public hearing. But now that you bring that up, I, I think you're probably right. Is that, is that, does anybody have any awareness or knowledge?
It's an appropriation of money, so I think it has to go through meetings.
All right, well, that, with that having been said, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we fund um, the public defender's office to the amount requested, uh, in their presentation, subject to any potential changes, um, between first and second reading as a result of a finance committee re- reexamination of this.
I'll second that.
All right, so we do have a, a motion and a second. Um, is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I, I'd just like to say that this was an excellent preparation of data and information. I wish we got this from everyone asking for increases, thank you.
Thanks, Stephanie.
And Stephanie, if I, if I can just, I just want to make sure that I'm clear on, on this, um, and then we'll, we'll vote. But so this, the one sixty-six, hundred sixty-six thousand dollars is for twenty-four thousand dollars of increase for salaries for existing staff. And then a, to hire two new attorneys that, that fall into the tier one and tier two?
That's correct.
All right, and, and so has there been any savings? It, I, as I read your, um, information, you, you've had three attorney spots that are open that you have not filled. Is there any savings that have occurred from that, that, that there's money there that can be used?
Unfortunately, I can't because I need to fill those positions. Um, if not, my Beaufort County staff is going to end up having a caseload of over three hundred for each attorney. Um, I've talked to my new chief courtney and it's feasible, but I, I don't think it's reasonable to require my attorneys, especially baby attorneys, to handle that type of caseload. If they were more seasoned, then I would feel comfortable doing that. But someone right out of law school, I really need to fill those positions. Um, I've been scouring the recent bar passage, um, results, trying to find some attorneys, putting out feelers. And, you know, our last circuit defender meeting, we asked, you know, each circuit, if you've got excess applicants, send it, you know, send them to the different circuits who are looking for them, so, um.
And, and thank you for that. And I guess I didn't phrase my question the way that I should have is, so you, you've got three spots that are open right now for the first six months of the year? So have you had savings since those three have not been filled up to this point?
Yes, those salaries are still there pending the, um, because of course they still charge us for the, the medical and the FICA, I believe. So they would have to, um, Kristi and Amber would have to determine how much the county won't take for us at the end of the year. One of the reasons why I try to encourage my employees to stay with me at least for a fiscal year is because Beaufort County still charged, charges us when an attorney leaves. So I'm ending up paying for that attorney that left and the new attorney. So until we find out how much that's going to call, cost, um, I'm, I can't say how much of, of savings that we'll have.
Yeah, I think Eric wants to say something and after Erickson, if anyone else wants to speak, go ahead, Eric.
Um, I'm just going to clarify this for you. We'll work with, if you all vote for this day, our finance team will work with, uh, the public defender's office to identify whatever surpluses that might exist in the salaries account and have a recommendation with an appropriate amount, uh, back to you all as quickly as we can, between first and second reading at your next, uh, finance committee meeting. Okay.
Good, any other, uh, any other questions before we vote? And, um, we would do this without objection unless I see someone that would like to. I do not see any objections, so, uh, this, um, then, so we have voted to actually move this to council uh, for a, for the first reading. And in that time, we'll get more information, uh, from staff on, on what needs to be done. All right?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Giddings, uh, thank you for coming out. All right, and then, um, our final, uh, is a recommendation changes to Beaufort County Procurement Code. This has come back to us just to clarify. I think that there was a, um, clerical error in the, um, uh, in the ordinance as what was, what was approved by the finance committee and then what showed up actually in the ordinance. And that's why it's come back here to clarify things. So, Ms. Richland, if you can just go ahead and fill us in on that, um, and, and how we got to where we are back at the finance committee.
Okay, I can certainly do that, you summarized it very well. So the recommendation that was made out of finance committee, um, was then carried forward, carried forward to county council. However, when the ordinance to accompany the backup from finance committee was entered into municipal code and was the packets that you received and as it went through county council's first vote, the ordinance had a discrepancy, um, versus the backup material. And so because it actually made it through first reading and with the discrepancy there, before you guys gave it second reading, we wanted to make you aware that there were, um, changes in the thresholds at the committee and county council level. That was because a staff member, um, thought that because of the discussion with the administrator's threshold being increased, that the other two were supposed to increase in line with that. However, that was not what was approved out of finance committee's original recommendation to council. So today we are back with the way that it was originally approved out of finance committee to county council for first reading. And we wanted to open it up for discussion before moving back to council for second reading.
Any, uh, any questions from anybody in chambers or online?
What did we end up with as Eric's approval level?
Eric's approval was increased from one to one fifty out of finance committee to county council. And I believe that there were reasons for doing so. But the county council and committees thresholds should have remained at two hundred and not increased to two fifty.
Mr. Hervishon, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, my question remains the same as the last couple of times we discussed this. But how does this increase the transparency and the accountability to the taxpayer?
I would argue that the increases that we have proposed are in keeping with the inflationary environment that we're in. Um, so I would actually argue that we probably are not losing any transparency at all. Um, and when you compare our proposed thresholds to counties in similar size and position to US geographically, you'll notice that Beaufort is somewhat in the middle of the pack. We're neither at the top nor the bottom. Um, and I think for those counties that have already, um, discovered that their thresholds have benefits of, you know, promoting, um, capitalism and not hampering transparency or vendors' ability to bid where appropriate. Um, I think speaks volumes to us and the reasons that we are trying to move this forward with recommendations that are in line with theirs. Um, I, I would argue that some of the increased thresholds would reduce staff hours. Um, the input and putting together bid specifications, it will save on advertising dollars, um, things like that. So I, I do foresee cost savings occurring because of this, but I could not give you an exact dollar amount.
So I hear you on the, the savings and the time and things like that. The question really is about transparency and accountability to the taxpayer. Because I, I feel like, you know, they don't really, they don't see, nor do they probably care too much about, um, the staff time to run these things through approval. They just want it done right and they want to make sure that their tax dollars are being well looked after. So that's really the question that I'm asking about. The one thing you said specifically is that it, to have it, I, I think what I heard anyway, is that to have the threshold low inhibits a vendor's ability to bid on, on work. I'm curious what you mean by that and if you could kind of expand on it. If, I, I hope I heard that right, but I'm just kind of curious about that.
I think you might have misunderstood that we've only increased the threshold for advertising for bids, um, by ten thousand dollars. So it, it used to be twenty-five thousand, it's now thirty-five thousand. And we don't think that that slight increase is going to inhibit anyone from being able to bid.
Got it, thank you.
Anyone up, Mr. Robin, go ahead.
Yeah, at, at the risk of beating a dead horse, I need help with one item. And I'm a total proponent of everything that we're, we're doing because what we really do is we identify all the stuff we want to do in the part of our budget process and then, um, so it makes sense to do the things we're talking about. I'm still struggling with if something comes up that's a sizable amount, but it's not in our budget. Do the same levels apply? Or does any item regardless of that amount have to come back before county council because it was not in the budget? I, I, I'm, I'm struggling with that a little bit and I apologize for dressing it more than once.
All right, no worries. So I believe that, um, Mr. Greenway's response last time was that if something exceeds an appropriated amount, that he would not want to do any kind of action on that without it coming back to the appropriate committee or county council level. Have I stated that correctly? Yeah, okay.
Okay, so basically the approval levels that we're approving are for items whether they were in the budget or not in the budget.
Well, you appropriate a sum of money for each fund. So, and that's further divided among departments within that fund. So our legal level of budgetary control is the department level or the fund level. So if a department wants to exceed a particular line item but transfer money within their line item so long as they don't come, you know, exceed their in total appropriation, they would have the flexibility to do that as it currently exists. So I would argue that this doesn't substantively change, make a difference in that scenario.
I would argue the counter is because basically what we're saying is that, if, for example, I have no problem with Eric. I'd give him more authority because than I, you were giving him. But basically what we're saying is whether the item is in budget or out of budget, it requires the same level of approval. That, that's my only point.
I would keep it consistent, yes, sir. So that if, let's just say, for example, um, our department budgeted for, um, a pickup truck. And let's just say that the pickup truck is not available. So instead, we're going to go with a, a larger SUV. So your item changed, but the purpose for which the funds were appropriated, being a mode of transportation, is still the same. So I, I wouldn't get so nitty gritty necessarily in the exact object, just that you guys appropriate an amount for a mode of transportation, being a vehicle, and staff and departments would have that flexibility.
So enough discussion, I, I do tend to disagree a little bit, but enough discussion.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Uh, I don't think this requires a motion, Mr. Chairman. I think that it's already before county council and we're just, um, making sure that the data that comes before county council comports with what was discussed at the committee. And it now does. And so I think this does not require a motion. What do you think?
Well, I, I think you're correct. That was, that was, my, my next question was going to be what action do we need to take? I saw there were deny or, or, or approve. But again, I think we, at this point, it just goes back to county. And let me just say, Chris, if I can try to answer your one question, we currently have procurement, procurement rules in place for things that are less than twenty-five thousand dollars. They must follow those rules. Um, and then there's things that are different whenever it's over twenty-five thousand dollars, which is the, the one specific thing we're talking about. So really all we're changing is the threshold. So the same procurement rules are for thirty-five thousand less, that used to be there for twenty-five thousand. And again, the, the, the other rules fall at, at, at thirty-five. So we're not taking anything away, so there's nothing more that is less transparent. It is just the fact that we've raised the thresholds of which procurement, um, uh, policies apply. So again, I just.
But, you know, my point is that if there's something that's a hundred thousand dollars and, or a hundred and one thousand dollars, let's say it's above the threshold and it has to come to committee or county council and be debated and talked about. And then that same item tomorrow doesn't need today. How does that increase the transparency to the public and the accountability to the public? My argument is that it does not. I understand inflation, I understand, I certainly understand financial workflows and making things administratively less burdensome. But the ultimate accountability and transparency to the public, I do not think that this increases that. Although, I mean, points well taken, I hear what everybody's saying, but that's just my view.
Mr. Chairman, yeah, thank you. Um, Ms. Richland, um, let me make sure I understand, uh, what you said earlier. I'm, I'm going to use your example of a vehicle, a truck versus a SUV. Um, it's a mode of transportation. But, um, you can't, or the staff cannot decide they want a generator and use that fund because a generator will cost just as much as a mode of transportation. They can't purchase a generator, um, because it wasn't a budgeted, right? Or are you saying because the money is available, since we're not getting a truck, we'll get a generator?
Yes, sir.
Then I have a problem.
When you appropriate a sum of money, you appropriate what that department has requested. And they are requesting money based upon their action plan for the year. And they are requesting money based upon their action plan for the year, their goals and objectives, the things that they hope to accomplish.
The generator would have been in the budget request. Are you saying?
In a, in a perfect world, a department head would know everything that they want or need when they make their budget requests to us. And we bring that, it's a plan. A budget is simply a plan. It's a four-letter word. It's not a bad four-letter word, but it's a four-letter word. It's a plan. And so that is how we approach our fiscal year. As things change, things that come up that are not anticipated, COVID, for example, and goods and services don't become available or they're available, but at a higher price, for example, the department is charged with operating their, their activities and responsibilities to Beaufort County. Whatever service they provide, be it finance or parks and recreation, is based upon that sum of money.
Let me, let me be very specific. I'm, I'm going to use your analysis. Um, I, 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 when we approve our budget, um, in that budget was for transportation, whatever mode of transportation it was for transportation, a pickup truck, uh, out in the country, you know, ideal. Um, Mr. Rodman needed a, a generator, uh, in, on Hilton Head. Um, now.
How'd you know?
My question is, I, I assume that a truck or mode of transportation is in the budget for my district. That's what we approved. But during the year, you did not buy the mode of transportation, but you said, oh, we got some money here and now we get Mr. Rodman's generator. Is that what you say we are doing?
I am saying that is allowed under our current ordinances that departments can transfer money among and between line items and between departments within a fund as it becomes necessary.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for explaining that.
Yep.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right. And again, we don't need any action on this. This just goes back for the second reading at council. All right. Is there any other matters that need to come before this committee? If not, um, and Stu, I'm sorry, I thought it would be quicker than this, but we are adjourned. And how soon did you want to start?
Sarah, five minutes, okay? Okay. We'll be back in about five or so.